Welcome to USD 305 Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before approval of agenda, I would like to take a moment here to share a few things with you if I could. With the recent school shootings in Florida and the many related incidents and distress around the country, unfortunately even in Salina, we understand that it is an unsettling time. Our hearts go out to families and our own staff who have to be conscious and aware of these type of situations and the impact on our own students. When these incidents happen, no matter where, the school district continually steps back and reexamines all our efforts to keep our students safe. We are currently in the process of reassessing and everything is on the table for discussion. We are fortunate that our community, through the bond issue, provide us with facility, safety upgrades, including buzzing systems, video cameras, and safety alarms in the buildings. We are also fortunate to have excellent school resource officers. We want to thank the many parents who have reached out to us to share their thanks, concerns, and thoughts and know that we are taking each one to heart. We also would like to thank the many parents who appreciate that we too are affected and care deeply for every child. The safety of our students and staff is our number one priority. We will continue to study, research, and do our due diligence for the well-being of our children. Those this evening interested in coming up for our public forum, at the back of the room, there is a blue sheet to fill out. We would like your name and contact information on this so that we may contact you. If there are several that have the same concern, please try and pick one person to speak for the group. And that again is at public forum time. Moving on to the agenda, do we have any additions or corrections?
Madam President, we do have some changes to the agenda. We are adding a 12A Attorney/Client Executive Session. We're adding a 12B for Student Matters, and we're adding a 12C for Personnel.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move adoption of the agenda with the changes noted, 12A, 12B, 12C.
Is there a second?
The majority, I second it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Next, we'll go to recognitions and presentations with Jennifer Bradford Vernon, and we have two recognitions on board, and I will let her take this over.
Good evening. Salina USD 305 presents the Horizon Awards to teachers who have demonstrated excellence during their first full year of teaching. We are proud to announce this year's Horizon Award recipients, Shelby Dinkle, Journalism Teacher at Salina Central High School, and Jessica Steele, Kindergarten Teacher at Cottonwood Elementary School. Shelby Dinkle is in her second year as a Broadcast Journalism Instructor. Thanks to the 2014 bond improvements and Shelby's excitement for digital and print journalism, Central's new video broadcast program is underway. Her insights into the curriculum planning, technology purchasing, and the overall vision of the program have been instrumental during program development. Nate Showman, Principal at Central High School shares, her content knowledge, creativity, flexibility, and enthusiasm have impacted our building in a positive way. I now invite Shelby to the podium.
Hello. My passion for education actually started as a USD 305 student, and the amount of knowledge I have gained as a student in this school district not only paved the path that I'm currently on as a yearbook and broadcast teacher, but it also helped me develop a sense of who I am, Ms. Dinkle. Sitting in my favorite teacher's class, Mr. J.D. Garber, developing a love for design and leadership sparked a quick journey to Kansas State and a much anticipated return to the very same halls I spent four years of high school in. I can remember enjoying my time in high school and the unique experience I had as a yearbook editor, and back then, I knew I'd always remain a Mustang, but I wasn't sure how my interests and abilities would translate into being Ms. Dinkle. Being me means that the focus and motivation I had as a student now has to be instilled in the eager and sometimes insecure high schoolers I see each day. Many of them show up in my room with different abilities and personalities, but when they leave, they take with them a no-self-limitations attitude. As a member of the inaugural class of the Bill Snyder Leadership Legacy Fellows, I was taught that life goals, taught life goals that shaped me as a person and a leader in the classroom. Choosing one of Coach Snyder's goals meant picking a slogan that I could live my life by but also share with my students. Goal number 12, No Self Limitations, taught me to forget the impossible and to rise up to any challenge because many of us can accomplish way more than we expected. Being Ms. Dinkle in my first year of teaching was hard and required me to put in extra time to share this philosophy and vision with my students. Posting it around the room and having different students define themselves with Coach Snyder's goals was my first shot at making a difference. It is now that I've had a taste of success from my students winning state and national awards for their work that I strive so hard and work each day to create an environment in my room that is beyond the obvious and instill my students' No Self Limitations attitude. It is a place where my students are given resources to create visually appealing print and digital media that isn't as vanilla as a word problem in their math book. With the recent additions to my beloved Central High, thanks to the passing of our bond issue, I have a classroom that is up to date with industry standards in my field. This allows me to provide my students each day with endless opportunities to create and explore. Already in my first year, we have developed a team of young journalists known as Mustang Media who are surprising themselves in their abilities to create professional-level graphics and video. These students earn award and work hard and work overtime to hit deadlines. They collaborate ideas, discuss, and sometimes argue about content decisions, and I feel like often they wonder why they continue to do what they do, spending hours and hours in the journalism room with me. But it is in these little moments after the grueling yearbook deadlines are met and the last sports picture order form is fulfilled that I hope that they understand what it's like to be me. Looking back at graduation in 2012, I had to give a speech that said, "When we walked into the doors as freshmen at Salina Central, I don't think any of us knew it was to come. Throughout high school, we've all gone through challenges. Whether it be mastering Mr. Peter's Siggy Figgies or having to memorize equations in one of Mr. Atwell's Geometry classes, we have all pushed through. It definitely wasn't easy, but it was worth it. Since then, I feel like not much has changed. I still walk through the doors at Central every day not knowing what's to come. Now, though, it's my students and I facing challenges together. Whether it be them mastering Mr. Peter's Siggy Figgies or myself trying to master something in my own classroom, we've all pushed through. It hasn't been easy, but it's been so, so worth it. Thank you all."
Thank you, Shelby. Jessica Steele is professional and positive in her relationships, and her calm and loving nature are perfect for the students of Cottonwood. She is able to quickly build relationships with students and maintain her classroom as a source of inspiration. Jessica's dedication is evident in the hours she puts in, her efforts for students who need extra support, and her solid grasp of curriculum strategies and interventions. Cottonwood Principal Kyle Griffiths adds, "Her students know she cares deeply for each and every one of them." I now invite Jessica to the podium.
Hi. So, thank you first of all for having me today. They asked me to kind of share something about my classroom and me as a teacher, and that's kind of hard to sum up in, I mean, a little bit, but it brought me back to when I was at K-State right before I graduated in my last semester. One of our professors asked us to bring one item with us to describe what we are as a teacher, how we would identify ourselves. And I brought a balloon because I wanted to, I said that I wanted to celebrate all my students, and that is something that I still find to be super important. So I just wanted to talk about why I think that's important. So I think it's important for teachers to celebrate students in our classrooms, celebrate their differences, celebrate their similarities, celebrate their accomplishments. Every student deserves to feel valued. Every student deserves to feel good about themselves, and when those things come together, amazing things can happen both in and outside of the classroom. Oh, sorry. So celebrating every student in your classroom helps them feel like a valued member of their community. A student who believes that he holds an important role in our classroom is going to come to school and work significantly harder than a student who feels unnoticed, whether that's by his teachers or by his peers. So in my classroom, we do little things like celebrate when all of our friends come to school for a day. We turn to each other, we tell them, "Good morning, I'm glad you're here." So students who feel valued are going to feel a desire to come at school, and that's the, really, the first step in creating a positive learning environment. Celebrating students helps them feel good about themselves. Students come into our classrooms with very different sets of skills year after year. For example, a boy in my first class came to our classroom, or came into my classroom last year, performing very academically low. I don't know how much you know about kindergarten, but our goal is to know all of our letters by Christmas. This little boy just could not get it. But then one day in April, a light bulb came on for him, and he was so proud, he was incredibly proud, and he wanted to share with his friends. And I mean, as his teacher, I was kind of nervous, like, "I mean, all your friends had that a while ago," but I mean, go for it. And when he told him, the classroom kind of erupted. Everyone was clapping, high-fiving him, hugging him, and that's when I kind of saw the benefit in celebrating my students because they learned to celebrate each other, and that just makes them want to come to school even more if even their friends are recognizing them. The students in my room are genuinely thrilled for each other when they do something right. Even just last week, I have this little boy who, we had a lot of inside recess, and they were doing puzzles, and I have a little boy who every time I tell him to clean, he'll dump his puzzle and be like, "Oops, I didn't mean to," and puzzles in kindergarten take us a very, very long time. Well, on Friday, the last day we were doing it, I told him and he cleaned it up, and another little boy went, "Hey, you cleaned up your puzzle, you didn't even dump it out," and he high-fived him, and I was like, "Oh, they're even recognizing the little things in each other." Every student in our classrooms has something to celebrate, whether it's, I mean, they know all their letters, or it's something like, "You didn't dump out your puzzle when it was time to clean up." And noticing those positive things and encouraging students to celebrate those with each other will provide all of our students in the classroom with a much greater likelihood to be successful and provide them with a positive self-image that is important even after they walk out of our classrooms. Yeah, so thank you to everyone, and that's all.
Thank you, Jessica, and I'd like to invite both Jessica and Shelby to the front with Dr. Hardy now. In recognition of the awards, Shelby and Jessica's pictures have been placed alongside other USD 305 Horizon Awardees. We have engraved plaques and apple pins for them as well. Congratulations. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
It was great spending time with you.
And thank you for telling me.
You were listening, too?
Yes, I was.
That's great. That's awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
And now for our Master Teacher. Last fall, members of NEA Salina selected Jonathan Ashnauer as the district's nominee for Emporia State University's Master Teacher Awards Program. Jonathan has taught for seven years, including six years at South High School and one year at Garden City Schools. Jonathan is a natural leader, involved in school and community beyond the halls of South High School. Jonathan has been the president of NEA Salina since 2015, and in that organization has coordinated events such as Pizza and Pedagogy, Teacher Store, and the 2016 Why Vote Multimedia Campaign. Now I'd like to invite Jonathan to share some thoughts with you.
Good evening. It's an honor and a privilege to speak with you tonight, and I must admit that I'm much more comfortable sitting over in a chair watching you guys do your work. I'm truly humbled and honored by the members of NEA Salina to be their 2017-2018 Master Teacher, and I would like to share just three lessons that I've learned during the last six years at South High School. Number one, teaching is a profession that is best walked together. I firmly believe that I'm standing here as the NEA Salina Master Teacher not because of anything unique or special that I did on my own. I believe I stand before you as a product of the time and effort that my parents, teachers, and multiple mentors have invested in me for the past 31 years. Specifically during the last six years in USD 305, I have grown from a teacher that is insecure and unsure of himself to one that stands before you with confidence today. Many friends, mentors, coworkers, and administrators over the years have invested time and effort to build a relationship that has assisted me in reaching my potential as an educator. These professionals have walked with me on this journey of becoming a teacher, a journey that if I had been forced to walk alone, I may have given up many years ago. I would like to thank the staff of Salina South High School and specifically the members of my department at South who have supported me during those first years, helping me learn the ropes as I transitioned to a special ed teacher from Social Studies. So thank you, Mrs. Kane, Mrs. Donnelly, Mrs. Rader, and Mrs. Vander Crete for being there for me. I believe we must all continue to make sure that teachers have the time and resources to ensure that they walk this journey of teaching together. Many challenges are facing the recruitment and retention of educators across the United States, Kansas, and even here in Salina. I recently read in an article from NEA Today that suggested that the majority of teachers who leave the profession is because they feel demoralized and isolated in the education system. I believe we must continue to recruit, protect, and retain educators because teaching is a profession that is best walked together. Helping new-to-the-profession educators develop meaningful relationships is just one of the things that we can do to make a difference and help a teacher stay within our district. I was fortunate enough to have those colleagues that understood that and helped me. Number two, say yes to unexpected opportunities. I never thought I would be elected as a leader of NEA Salina. I'm pretty sure that my high school history teacher would be surprised to see how I've changed my political beliefs over the years. A few years ago, I began to feel powerless because of the actions by the Kansas Legislature. I decided to get involved and become a building representative. I thought this would be my highest level of my involvement until one spring afternoon, Michelle Palmgren nominated me for President of NEA Salina. Even though I worked really hard to find reasons to say no, I finally said yes. With that one yes, I opened the door to opportunity and have learned to say yes to other opportunities that have helped me improve my leadership skills. I have gained skills that I would never have thought possible just three years ago. I encourage us all to learn to say yes to new opportunities even when they seem out of our own comfort zones. Number three, change happens. Change is inevitable in the world of education. During each of my years, each year of my career at Salina South High, I have experienced a change in order to meet the needs of the students that I have the opportunity to serve. There is a saying amongst educators that I've heard ever since entering the doors of Wichita State to become a teacher, and is that if you wait a while, you'll see the latest reforms come back just a few years. Over the past 70 years, public schools have opened their doors to students of all races, ethnicities, and ability levels. The message we send to our parents, community, and students is loud and clear. Education is a right of all our students to receive. With expanded opportunities of all students, it is clear that the needs of our students fall within a wide spectrum of abilities in which we strive to meet the individual needs of our students. Currently, Kansas is experiencing a huge amount of change in the field of education, going back as far as 1960s with the consolidation of schools. The battles over the definition of adequate and equitable funding have left teachers and school districts making difficult choices. Proposed changes from the Kansas Department of Education offer to revolutionize the way our classrooms may look and feel over the coming years. I would like to just share one more important thing about change in the education field. When any change is considered, one must always include input from educators who are on the front lines, being able to provide the appropriate resources and making sure that the plan is well-developed and implemented in a timely fashion to ensure the success of our students and teachers. I thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to making my way back to my chair.
Thank you, Jonathan. Jonathan, we extend to you our congratulations as the Salina Master Teacher of the Year. Your picture has been placed in this boardroom alongside other outstanding educators, and we present you a marble apple as a memento of this honor.
Moving on in our agenda for approval of consent agenda items, we are looking at minutes of the February 13th, 2018 Regular Meeting, Personnel Report, Treasurers Report, Investment Report, Journal Entries, Approved Central High Fundraising Activity, and Approved South High Fundraising Activity. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move for approval of the consent agenda items.
I have a motion. Second. And, second?
Yes, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. We have come to public forum, and one more time, I noticed that people came in after we started our meeting. If you are interested in coming forward and speaking at the public forum, here is a blue sheet to complete at the back of the room. We'd like that done, please, so that we can have contact with you, information for contact. And if there are several of you, we'd like you to kind of group together to come forward. Right now, I just have Amber Fishburne, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Amber. And I'm going to ask you to share a couple of things first, and then I'm going to fill you in on what some of our procedures are a little bit.
What do you mean, share?
Could you state your name and address?
My name is Amber Fishburne, 365 North Kansas Avenue, here in Salina.
Okay, thank you. During this time, you might see that Dr. Hardy is going to be writing, he's going to be writing down your comments and things
Okay.
that we can look at. During this time, you have three minutes allowed for this, for you to do your presentation. At this time also, none of the board members can comment or ask questions. We are just here to listen.
Okay.
So there'll be no response from the board members at this time, and I don't see that on my computer to read. Was it put there? I don't see it. Here we go. Let me read this in. Thank you, Deborah. "As a reminder, public forum is a non-action item on the agenda. The Board appreciates patrons taking time to share with us about their thoughts and concerns. This is not an appropriate time or place for patrons to make comments of a personal nature about any district employee or student. Persons making comments which violate the privacy rights of district employees and students will be asked to stop speaking or cease their remarks. If a patron or parent has a concern with one or more employees, the Board will refer that person to the appropriate supervisor or to the superintendent for further review." And I'll just add on to that, no mention of names at all.
Okay.
Thank you again for your time.
No problem.
Okay.
Obviously, I don't have a prepared speech. I think my concern is, currently I have a child at Oakdale and one going to Lakewood and coming into high school. Over the recent weeks, as you've, I hate to damper on those of you who received rewards, but congratulations and thank you for your service. My concern is solution. The attempt has been made to go to the city, and obviously, my attempt as a parent is just to come here and I guess voice my thoughts on what I think. I'm not about destroying the school board, and that's mine. My intention is not to come here and be disrespectful or to be rude. My concern is the safety of my children. And when I believed that was in jeopardy is when my daughter looked me in the face and asked me, "What did I do wrong?" I didn't have an answer. So our children, instead of what we did as children, is we had a concern, we went to an adult, we went to a principal, we went to a counselor, we went to a teacher that we entrusted, and our children are looking in gun safes and in drawers and, for their safety, bringing these things to school. So I think where our concern lies as parents is our children don't have that safe haven anymore, or where they're at, they don't feel safe. And education is supposed to be the primary concern for those kids right now. That's all I want for mine. I want them to be better than me. I want them to be fruitful and be educated and be out in the world and make a difference. And I feel like that is being taken away. So I guess what my concern would be is, you talked at the very beginning of this meeting and stated, there are things that are going to change, there are things that you guys are looking into to changing and making things different for our kids, but when's that going to happen? So we've excellent, and this started with me for the year, this is the worst school year that I've had with my kids, where they've struggled with bullies and fear, and that's terrifying as a parent. That is absolutely terrifying as an opinion parent. So I don't know what to tell them, and I want to be able to tell them something. I want to be able to tell them, these are the changes that are going to be implemented to make it a better place for you to be. Whether it be metal detectors and cameras or a resource officer, we just, as parents, I think, want just an answer, just tell us what we can do for our kids. I know, they're trying to keep you safe, and that's all I can say, but they don't believe me right now. And so I think, I just want you to know that there are faces with those kids, there are hearts with those kids, and there are parents that truly want the best for their children and want them educated and to be safe. But we just want, we just want answers, and hopefully we'll find them. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. We always encourage the value and input.
districts, they make use of the ones that are hired by the cooperative itself. So, there's been a question about why this difference exists and how it happened. I'm not so sure that the history has been particularly easy to find, but we are concerned, especially as the emphasis on social-emotional development increases with the emphasis from our state at this time. USD 305's health insurance plans, financial status was discussed. Member districts are going to see an increase in their assessments because they have to provide coverage for those employees who are hired through USD 305. There has been a study of special education students and where they are served and how many are projected to be served in these locations for the next year, and then there will be some adjustment in places where there's overloading, places that are going to be underserved. Several staff members have resigned positions suddenly in February, very suddenly. So, reassignments have had to be made to cover those. It's not an ideal situation, but you do what you're able to do. And travel to higher education institutions for the purpose of recruiting and hiring is fully underway as of the end of February and the 1st of March. I've also attended several meetings with NEA Salina, two with the Leave Committee. The purpose of that was to come up with suggestions for any changes that might need to be brought to the negotiations table for changes in the current leave policy. Also have met with the NEA Salina Executive Board. Those meetings have been very productive, I think, very good, very open discussion. We've discussed the health insurance plan, how it works, and what its current financial condition is. We've also discussed planning time, which is a very important emphasis, I would say, for teachers at this particular time, trying to come up with some ways to increase time for planning, personal planning and collaboration as well. In late January, Dr. Hardy and I visited the Adult Education Center to honor Allison Roning, who was presented Bank Six's Most Amazing Teacher Award. It was really very nice because along with other SAEC members, Allison's father, who lives here in Salina, and her sister, who drove all the way from Nebraska, attended that presentation. And then finally, in early February, I and three other retired USD 305 teachers assisted with the Journal's Spelling Bee. Our district prints materials for students and our teachers encourage students to attend and help them in preparation for that. So, it's kind of a combined effort with the journal and the district and Parks and Rec and lots of other groups. So, it's a good program. So, those are the things that I wasn't able to report on last time.
Okay, thanks, Carol.
You bet.
Jim?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Gary?
Yes, I participated in the work being done with the Education Foundation on selecting our next lift participants who will be receiving forgivable loans in return for their college and return for coming here to teach, so we can pick some of the best and the brightest to come here and be in our schools. That was quite a lot of fun, going through some very nice resumes and some very nice letters of recommendation and such. And we still have interviews to do. I'm not going to mention any names. We still have interviews today. Then we'll have our celebration that's on our upcoming dates of importance on April 10th, so we're going to get together and further discuss and do some interviews. Did that. Tickets for the Education Foundation 305 Live have gone on sale now, $12 and $20. The best way for anybody here or anybody out there who's going to watch this, the best way to do this would be to call or go by the Stiefel. You save the online costs of tickets that way, but we're selling through the Stiefel and it's because it's at the Stiefel, so you can get your tickets now, and remember, that's May 23rd.
Thank you, Gary. Anne?
I was in several of the schools this month. I was the Reader of the Month at Heartland Early Education. I got to read The Stray Dog, and I should be able to tell you who wrote it, and it's Mark somebody. Okay. It was a big hit. I've also been in the schools doing songwriting workshops at Oakdale for the fourth graders and the Songs of the Revolutionary War at Sunset for the fifth graders. I think that's all.
Thank you. Kate?
I attended the Parks Board Meeting last Wednesday. We reviewed the 2017 annual report and 2018 goals. I got to attend the Horizons Luncheon honoring the state Horizons winners, and Ms. Jessica Steele was there with Nedrin, Dr. Hardy, and that was a great event celebrating educators from all over the state of Kansas. Attended the South and Central Girls and Boys Varsity Games at South High last week, and it's so much more exciting than when I was in school, having those on campus instead of 12 people being in the Bicentennial Center. And at an eye exam last week, where I got told I am now nearsighted, I got to interact with a USD 305 medical internship student that got to talk with her about her future plans and how valuable that program's been for her in figuring that out. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Emma?
Attended West High graduation with Nedrin, Dr. Hardy, and Jim, and it was really, really nice celebration.
Great, that's all?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Upcoming.
Well, I went to the graduation at Salina West also, and that was very nice. We had four graduates that will walk with Central High School students, and that's really nice. They've done a lot of hard work there. And then again, Jessica Steele was able to attend the Horizon Award Reception for her in Topeka, and that was very nice. And they did a beautiful job honoring all of the state award winners. And then also attended Salina Education Foundation Meeting with Gary, and he did a good report. So, that's all I have to report. And we'll move on to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. It was a pleasure to travel to Topeka with our board members and one of our administrators. The exciting thing is, I wish everyone would have an opportunity to be there that day and see all the rock stars that we have that are there, that are educators across Kansas. And we had, of course, we were there to recognize Jessica, but we had other teachers that were there that have earned that privilege to be there every year as part of Keen, and it's just, it's very affirming that we are very blessed to have such good teachers. So, I like to point that out. Also, it's nice that Representative Johnson, our representative, helped recognize people by a legislative proclamation. I would like to recognize the folks that work the hardest and earliest in the morning that people don't see. Those are the people at our buildings and our building operators and our maintenance operation, who are the ones that are out there removing snow, ice, whatever it might be. And I also like to thank the city publicly. We are very fortunate to have city folks that care, and I must admit, I feel a little bit of pressure because usually what happens is, two or three days before I start talking with the city, you know, before we have a weather event, they have their forecast and I have my forecast. And so, we kind of start comparing, and the closer we get, the forecasts kind of become the same. But I have, you know, their phone numbers. They are so good at taking calls, so the night before, we talk before there's an event. And then that next morning at about 4:00, we're both out driving around. The main city gentleman, Brent is his name, really very excellent guy. And so, we're out driving around, we're comparing notes. We go by the buildings, and I see our city people, our folks out there spreading, you know, salt and things like that. The city trucks are around, and here's why I feel the pressure. They care so much that we have school, that they're disappointed when we call off because they work so hard. And sometimes, it just is what it is. You know, they'll tell me when it's, that they don't think they can keep up. But they worked so hard at this last weather event that we had, that the streets were pretty decent. And I drove up and down every side road. I probably went through everybody's neighborhood. If you looked out your window about 4:30, you could have waved at me. And it's just really, it's nice to know that we have such dedicated people who care about our students that want us to have school. And it's interesting because a lot of those people driving those trucks around town, they have kids in school. And I'd like to think they do it because they care, but they also want their kids in school. So, I think that's part of it, too. But I just think it's worth recognizing them for all their hard work and dedication. I also want to lift up our District Site Council. We had our first District Site Council meeting, and I also want to point out that Lynn X-line and her staff just do a fantastic job with school improvement, and that was the point of the evening. So, our Site Council, our District Site Council is made up of business leaders, parents, teachers, and administrators. They gave us amazing feedback. We shared information with them. That's what we really wanted. Here's what we're doing. What does this look like to you? Does it feel like we're on track? One of the bonuses was that we had a forum or a panel of our employers, and they shared with us what they want in an employee. And that's important for us because we want to affirm in that we're on the same page turning out students that are going to contribute and make a difference in our own community here. The other thing I thought was interesting is that part of the discussion was that the challenges that they have finding employees, that each of them have, they would like to grow. They have jobs that are open, and some of them have a living wage, which is really a, you know, huge thing for us, but they can't find employees. And after we talked about, you might have seen the paper, I think the unemployment rate in Salina is 2.6%, which is incredibly phenomenal. But we're glad to do our part to contribute to Salina, to make it a better place, and so that by having that connection, I think that was really valuable. The last thing I want to point out, and this is probably really, really important for the elementary, Friday is Dr. Seuss's birthday, so if you want to do something fun, go to one of our elementary schools, and it is just a joy to be there on those days. So, that's my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Moving on on our agenda, is there a motion for executive session for Personnel?
Is it attorney-client was the first one?
Yeah, the first one.
Do you want attorney-client first?
How many minutes?
Okay. Let's see, we'll go in five minutes, and why don't we have?
Hold on. Erin, how much time do you think we need?
Fifteen?
Okay. Madam President, could we start with fifteen?
Wait, what do you think?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, fifteen. Fifteen minutes. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 5:50. Is that what you prefer? For fifteen minutes for the purpose of consultation with Board Legal Counsel on matters which are privileged in the attorney-client relationship, which if discussed in open session would waive that privilege, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:05 in the Board Conference Room.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move to executive session in five minutes. And by the way, that is just across the hall. If some of you are interested in staying for other sessions, you can stay in the